Don't think it's gonna get anything better for you.
Good morning, it is June 24th.
Prime pan into the fire.
This is a work session for the planning board. I believe first up this morning, we had candidate with bank. We have an applicant here.
Yes, I'm sorry. Jeff Todd from Holmes King Caucus Architects.
And Julian Marshall from Holmes King Caucus Architects.
And Ed Kapler from Kapler and Freeman.
Alright, the floor is yours. I think we're looking for update.
Yeah, this is Ed Kapler. We had some minor corrections to make to the plans from the planning board meeting we attended back in May. They were, they were rather minor, we had to show some stacking. There were some other things, I think we submitted a response ladder to the board in the last submission that addressed those items. I think we're almost there site wise.
Okay. Site wise, so we'll talk site first and then we'll, we'll jump into architecture real quick. Can you talk to us a little bit about the drive-through lanes, escape lanes, stacking? You know, where you stand with all of those, I think it was concerned that our code requires you to show five cars from each teller lane, four from each ATM lane. And I know this is minor, but you know, I think we're comfortable at this point, are you, the middle, the unfilled lane in the middle is another teller lane, correct?
That is, and it looks like we can fit three cars in that before they start stacking out to where it's where the two lanes are. So I, I think we have, we have plenty of stacking room there. Because obviously, we can stack probably another three or four cars in the remaining portion of the ATM and drive-through lanes.
Yeah, I mean, for graphics purpose, I don't know that we wanna show all this. I think it shows it as it is. I think, I think it does show it as it is.
Is there any, we were talking, is there any requirement about having like an escape lane to get out of the drive-through lane if you need to?
Well, we do have that to the, to the left. If you're the fourth car back, you can escape up into the lot.
I think the question a lot is asking is do you, is there a requirement for where that escape lane needs to start?
Well, I don't think so, I don't even know if there's a requirement for the escape lane.
It's a convenience that the bank is offering.
Right.
I mean, it's it's typical now than anything.
But you know, I don't ever see a plan where we'll have the, all of the ATM, the ATM and the drive-through lanes, you know, stacked up with eight or 10 or 12 cars.
Could we talk a bit about the buffering? I know there were some residents of the CD meeting who were concerned, who live on Edwards Drive, concerned about like the state of the fence or anything, have you had any conversations with Wegmans about any of that?
Oh, we, we have not. You know, we, it's, there's really, I mean, actually, they, you want to, there's really like three buffers there, we have the the distance and slope buffer, which isn't really a buffer, but it's, but it does create buffering. And then the fence and then the landscaping, the fencing, we haven't looked at it. And we haven't had any dialogue with Wegmans about the state of it.
Okay. Lighting and everything complies?
Yep, Mark looked at it, I took a look at it.
Is there any lighting on this side of the building that faces the residential?
Yes, there are two low light poles. One near the waste enclosure and the other one where you enter the drive-through area.
How high?
There's all, I'm sorry, there's also a required light over the ingress door in the back, just a simple wall sconce.
How tall are those poles?
They're 22 feet.
How high is the burb?
Five, 10, 15, 20 feet maybe?
Yeah, it's quite a bit, yep, I'd say it's in the 20 foot range.
And all that lighting faces down?
Yes.
And away, I mean, that's a single, single head pole.
It's a pole facing, facing the bank.
Do you, do you have the, do you have the shields, the house side shields on the, on those fixtures?
We don't, but we can add those.
Oh, definitely do that, bud.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Any other site?
If they had those shields, if they had the shields, that, that really should take care of any glare issues they might be experiencing there.
I'll add that as a keynote to the layout plan. And to the lighting plan.
Yeah, just do a, you know, call out those fixtures separately from the others with the shields and, and you know, update your luminaire schedule and.
Any other site comments, Mark or?
I, I didn't have anything.
Okay, added the curved island in the parking lot to kind of distinguish this area from the rest of the plaza. You moved from a full-size dumpster to like trash totes, is that correct?
Correct.
The, the parking, we were good with, the sizes and the number, that's all set. So I don't really have much else.
Where, sorry, where were the garbage to be stored? That's not the, that's not the object on the bottom right by, where's that?
So this is the generator, I believe, and this is the area for the totes as well?
The generator. Just the generator. Correct.
Garbage and generator.
Both, okay.
Yes.
Eric, autumn rain, stone mulch.
Yes. There's, there is stone mulch again on this one. Stone mulch is discouraged.
There's the AC.
Yeah, it's hot here.
Oh, is it? Yeah, just come out in here, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's on the BMS, you, you can adjust it.
There's no AC in this.
Ever?
Since they updated the system, it's been more.
So yes, the stone mulch has come up again in the past, it's
where is it located?
We have it in most areas. We, personally, I really like stone mulch. I think it, you don't have to replenish it, it looks good.
What size is the stone?
It would just be uh, right, number two, number three, or actually, number three, number four. It would be a Wash River stone, multi-colored. Just, it's a decorative stone mulch.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that one. As Eric said, it's typically discouraged in the town.
I know, I don't like that. I think there's great, I, I think there's a great applications for it when we do these industrial projects and we know that we're gonna receive maybe stone mulch at least will because you don't have to worry about it getting replenished, and this is an industrial, but I've done other projects where we've had to put it in, we go back and it's just a weed bed later on.
Okay. We'll talk about that one, architecturally, any comments from the board?
Yes, the, are the, on the renderings, are the plantings, I mean, they're beautiful renderings, are the plantings faithful to what's shown on, on the site plan?
Yes, I believe they are.
And looks like you're proposing a, a clock on the front, is that, that's also correct with the site plan?
That's correct.
It's a working clock?
Yes.
Yes.
The bank, it's kind of their signature move, that's one of the few things that they, they, they bring to every site is this, this clock. And their, their new logo is based around the clock, inspired by the clock.
I think it looks nice. Are all, all your mechanicals, are they on the ground or are they on the roof?
They're on the ground, behind the building, leather, and they're enclosed by landscaping.
Nice.
Here you go. Up on the renderings, go up and nope, down, sorry. That's the rear elevation?
Correct.
Top. So your mechanicals are where?
They're.
Behind those bushes?
Correct.
What, what piece of equipment do you have less than, let's call that 30 inches, 40 inches?
They're, they're basically small condensing units, I think there are three of them, if I recall.
Yeah, it's just condensing units for the AC. The other mechanicals are in the room, are in the building.
What happens in winter when the, you know, landscaping isn't as full as the rest of the year?
They're, they'll be hidden behind the, the the shrubs without the foliage, but they'll be hidden. Or obscured, I should say, they're not gonna, we, you know, the intent is to screen them, but not fully screen them.
You slide up to the site plan. And then I think we can. Zoom in on that one.
We show two units.
So it's just those two in the bottom right?
I think there's one flanking the, the walk, I think there's one to the north, on the other side of the sidewalk.
We'll have to add that.
If I recall correctly.
Yeah, that's our, this is the drawing set that we had, like, old 528. So would you do the same thing if there's one flanking to the north of that parking, you would bump the, the planting bed out?
Correct.
I mean, back of the building is facing residential side.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I agree, I think, I think it works.
Are there any other comments, concerns?
So you're still working on your final sign design? Is that correct?
The, yeah, the, the, the sign design has been approved and announced. I do have a rendering with our take on it at this point, we don't have the actual graphics, but we, we copied the graphics.
So the, the directional signs I saw meet code, that's good. The, since this is a shopping center with a multi-tenant, I know we discussed that before, so I believe the intent last time after last meeting was to address the signage under a separate application.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you show us on the building elevations where this signage will be?
Sure.
Because I think what we, probably what we'd wanna do and approve as part of this is you know, location, like we did, where the location of the signage is, just have a box outline. We did that over track and racket, right? Same thing, here, over there.
And so this will probably require variances because whatever it is, yeah.
To where, yeah, where, where it faces.
Like that would need a variance, right, because that's not to Genesee.
That is facing Genesee.
That one, that was facing your.
That Genesee, okay, that's not that.
Or not your Genesee, yeah.
Genesee, okay, and then
that one would need a variance.
For that one, yeah.
So those are the only two locations?
That's correct.
So you would need a variance for that sign right there. And for whatever set of drawings we're gonna approve with all the, you know, updated elevations and renderings and all of that, remove the sign and just put a dashed box around the extent of the signage that you want and label it, you know, future, future signage and give the square footage what that box area is.
Yeah, but can we do that for this one, if they don't have a variance, we can't approve something showing signage that's not approved?
Correct, correct, yes, so only on the one facing Genesee do that, this one you can't show. Alright. What is their path forward from here?
Just making these changes and then getting us final plan package. Um, also, well, if we're doing signs separately, we don't need to worry about that now, so.
So our. Right, so our deliverable deadline? July 10th.
Yeah.
July 10th, make sure materials are in by July 10th.
That would get you on the agenda for July 24th.
These changes don't seem that significant, I know what, we could take care of these today.
So if you could have it all in by the, by Thursday.
Thursdays, yeah, Thursdays are deadline for the 7/10 meeting.
Did you want me to fix up kind of these, where the labels meet up and resubmit new renderings? All as one complete package? We need, we need a clean up, a full clean package, which has got all the site drawings, all the elevations, everything in there is one approvable package, not piecemeal, separate things, like, clean it all up, get it ready. If you can have all that in by Thursday, is there really no additional comments from us here, the board, then we can get you on for the next one.
Okay.
I'd like to, to bring up a, a design change to discuss, so could you scroll down to the north elevation of the drive-through?
So where my expertise comes in?
Jessica, hire you.
Thank you. So we're developing the columns that are supporting the drive-through canopy and the base of that, we're gonna continue the stone around the base. And we're very concerned about the constructibility of those slots between the columns and also just gathering debris. So what we're, we're planning to do is to make those columns monolithic with a, a brick slot detailed in the middle. So I just wanted you to see that, so it's not a surprise.
Should we use a darker brick or just recess it?
We'll just recess it.
So you're just talking like a, a one-inch recess or something, or something to give a shadow line?
Yes.
Jamie, you're open.
It's the shadow line that's.
Shadow line for me. Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
And did you say you're, you're changing the base of those columns to be that gray stone?
That's correct.
Better anyway, durability wise. Are there any bollards or anything around those columns?
Yes. We can add those to the rendering.
Colors of the bollards. Will typically be yellow. I mean, what, yeah, the question was, what color are the bollards?
Oh, I, so actually, I see there's one rendered.
There's one there.
Yeah, that, that's actually where the bollards are located. And I, I can tell you our client is not inclined to use yellow bollards.
Thank you. Alright. Any other comments from the board?
Anything?
Great. Thank you, work with Eric to get stuff in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next up, we have Taco Bell. Someone here from Taco Bell, they're on the hall, oh. Morning.
Good morning.
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 Alright, table's all yours. We haven't seen that in a while and.
I can get up there and go over.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, and I'll just be.
Fill one nice.
Need a job?
Alright.
So, thank you for meeting with us again. Uh, coming back with 5840 Bridge Street for the Taco Bell, that we've been working through the wetland issues that have come up recently. Um, we've had a wetland biologist go out and take a look at delineating wetlands in the northeast corner of the property. Uh, we included that report in his submission as well as, everything has been submitted to the DCE, so we're starting to work through that process as well. Otherwise, from the last time you saw this, not a lot of changes, one small one, the driveway has moved a little bit further away from Bridge Street just to provide, there's a utility pole here, National Grid has instructed us not to move it. We've also been in contact with National Grid as far as the easement for the service into the property, and we've got an email confirming that they're gonna work with us to make whatever we need to, wherever we need to place the transformer, we'll, we'll make that easement work.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, a little bit, they're just going to amend the existing easement, rather than, there's a process that's called, oh, something 70, it's a long process, they said, we'll just simply amend the easement that's in place.
And that easement was for the primary service of the building, so it wasn't, it's not associated with other services, it's, it was for the old restaurant that was there, so it's an easy move, so the new service for the new Taco Bell will be adjusted because of that easement, right?
Does that impact the building in easement?
Uh, no, so the new one that we've proposed, just kind of doglegs around the corner of the building, comes down the driveway and then goes straight to that transformer.
So there won't be any, you won't, you won't be building in any National Grid easement?
No, no.
With this amendment?
Yeah, no structures would be in that National Grid easement.
So there's just one easement you're dealing with?
There are two easements on the property, um, but there's really only one that we are dealing with, the other one is this northeastern corner. They've got these high transmission lines that go through the property. We're not really affecting anything in that, and we're adhering to their design guidelines. Their biggest one is just going perpendicular to those transmission lines with our driveways. And otherwise, we have nothing going in over there, so we've talked to them, they have very little comments other than the trees that are gonna go there. The other issue that's come up from a past conversation is the sidewalk that would keep going up to Enterprise here because of this wetland. It's gonna become very difficult to build that there due to its proximity off the street.
What about connecting the left side of the drive aisle to that?
Do you?
Yep.
I mean, yeah, we can absolutely put that in the plans, that wouldn't be a huge issue. Our primary access obviously is off Bridge Street, but a little bit there, we're providing two double-barreled culvert crossings across there just to kind of keep this drainage the same. Right now, it's just a drainage trench that kind of comes along.
These two directions. That's why, now make sure there's a walk there. One of the, I think the iteration, the last drawing set that we had was, I can't remember when it was, 410? October, something, 2020.
This is up in the bourbon.
10, 1030, 2024, so October 30th of the last year. At that point, we were looking at where the building was located, driveway or the, the drive-through lanes, the discussion around how you guys both entered and exited, exited onto Bridge Street, but also prevented people from crossing traffic getting in. I think you made those adjustments in this current set.
Yes.
That was there, but in doing so, your building shifted further up to the corner.
So I don't, I don't believe the building has moved at all since our last, so I believe.
Oh, it's 100% moved.
Okay, um.
I've got.
Maybe not since the last one, but since October, I think.
Okay, I was gonna say, so the last one was, um, I believe we submitted in December and then the DC thing came up.
Well, I think where I'm going with this, where I'm going with this is, one of the nice things about that previous iteration was there was no zen parking at the north end. It allowed people to not have to cross drive aisles and all of that in order to get into the building. In the current iteration, at least between October and now, and the building moving up, those, those parking stalls are gone.
Yes.
Right? Talk to me a little bit about what forced the move of the building north to eliminate those parking stalls.
Go back to October here, I believe the main factor here was providing the required stacking as well as a little bit extra because I know that there was concern about the stacking spilling out into the parking area.
And that horseshoe movement to get into the drive-through lane.
Yeah.
So that horseshoe movement kind of, we opened that up, and when we opened that up and to get that, the, the stack count, it forced the push of the building to the north.
Is it possible, and I think there's, there's a lot of benefit to that no zen parking at the top, and I know Doug's still on the line, is there an option here to take that stacking, potentially push the stacking and use a little bit of that drive aisle between the dumpster and that first lane as some of the stacking in there, slide that building south a little bit to get that no zen parking of the leave everything at the bottom, what you've done in the, in the new iteration. Leave that bottom because I think you've done that, what we've, we've talked about, you know, with that horseshoe, but slide the building down so that we can have that no zen parking at the north end and just take some of that, that stacked parking and maybe use that, not the outer drive aisle, not the one if you were going from Bridge and kind of going all the way around the bottom and up to Enterprise is kind of like the, let's call that the primary half of circulation that way.
Area, okay.
But the other drive aisle as like a, you know, pseudo area where you can put a couple extra cars if you needed to in there. area where you can put a couple of extra cars if you needed to in there. Is that?
We can absolutely, we could take a look at it, I believe part of the concern was with moving this a little bit further down was this radius becomes very tight.
I'm not saying change the radius.
Okay.
I, like, I think what you guys did responded to what we asked you to do. I think in doing that, we lost the parking up at the top because I think everything kind of just shifted, right?
Yeah.
If we could leave what's down at the bottom, because I think, like I said, you, you responded to what we asked you to do. But in, you know, in doing that, we sacrificed the other parking. I'm wondering if we could take the building and slide the building back down to where it almost was previously, which doesn't look that far. It's only that, the distance of the angled portion of the building that's in that easement right now, sliding that building down. So that the corner is, you know, yeah, that, if you just slide it down that way, just a little bit.
Yeah, maybe.
Corner is at that easement line.
Okay.
Now that's where it was before, you can have that, that nosing parking along the north end in there.
So essentially, we would lose probably two car stack in the perpendicular or parallel to the building.
But those two cars.
But, but you couldn't put those on that where the horseshoe is. We're always trying to avoid having the stack, the theoretical stack, impact parking spaces. But to your point.
Right.
They could be there in a, in a realistic version.
Right.
And those, but I, I don't disagree.
So.
Those nosing parking spaces probably outvalue, uh,
The, the couple of times that, you know.
Minor inconvenience of this.
You might have somebody there, and even if we stack this and you get a big rush of people, that might exist anyway. Right?
True.
So I think having an opportunity where somebody can nosing and not have to cross the traffic, cross all the, the drive aisle is a benefit to this site and to this project, so.
Especially ADA spots too.
Yes, yeah, puts those ADA spots right back, kind of close to the building on a path that they don't have to wheel across, drive lanes.
Why, do you wanna respond?
That was our preferred layout, actually, so.
Well, I think you have a hybrid, I think you have a hybrid of what you showed back in October and then you responded to our comments, which you took care of here. And I think we want to kind of take what you did here and then make sure that we get the other parking back and, and.
Okay. We can do that.
And it's, it can't show the stacking interfering with the parking though. I mean, that's in the code.
What, and what's the code number for, for this? Cause we've, I think we've.
We've, we've. Unintelligible. The material over here.
Yeah, the stacking spaces shall be located so as not to not interfere with the use of parking spaces or the free flow of traffic on the site and shall be adequately striped and marked with directional signs.
Free flow we have. And then what's the number here? It's under drive-through, not under stacking.
Yeah, one ninety two seven two.
As far as the quantity of cars you need.
Yes, that's what I'm talking.
Oh, that's.
It's four from the pickup window back, six from the order box back.
But if we were moving the building down, we were gonna put some nose in up here, we could potentially.
Yeah, can you get rid of the parking?
You know, bring, like, this a little bit forward and heavily strike this to be.
Like, if you're adding parking spaces, do you?
Especially if you get the ones up across the front, cause that's where the.
Again, we'll have to look at it. That was, that was somewhere balanced, it was a parking count total, which is, which we believe is excessive, but we're trying to get balance and code required.
I don't know, that, sorry, we were talking, did you go through the number that you have versus what's required in terms of stacking?
So it's.
Jamie, I believe we've.
From, uh, window to order board is four and from the order board to, uh, no conflict is six, total of ten. So what do you, what I don't.
I believe we've got eleven here, I think we have one extra stacking from the window to the order board.
All right.
Let, we'll see what you know.
Yeah, I mean, make it as. Yeah, as clean as, as possible here. I think the hybrid between the two is feeling like the right solution for this. It, it protects pedestrian patrons that want to get there and not have to be in the parking lot. You know, it solves the, the issue along the, the south property line.
I'm thinking if we maybe a lot of, if we lose maybe these three spaces, they become kind of an island and that stack of that car stack is here, that is not impacting parking, right? So that would meet code.
As long as you keep your parking count, but you'd be adding spaces, right?
I, I get it.
Yeah.
So on the parking count separately, I was just talking about if we maintain this.
Yes.
And we put a, you know, again theoretically a car here and a car here, but these are no longer parking spaces, then we're no longer in conflict with parking.
Yes.
And then, and then we work on that parking count deal. I mean, that's my thought, John.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
It's been a balance, a lot of these issues and, um, you know, frankly, uh, the, the hard delay in coming back is the wetland issue and having Michael Fishman, uh, do his thing. We had to wait for snow melt and then we got him out there and now, now we're waiting on D E C response. But I think talking to staff is, and I think part of our message today is we're working through those issues. We are not touching the wetland, but the issue becomes now it's a D E C wetland, not an Army Corps wetland. D E C wetland comes with a hundred foot buffer, so it is a permit act. We've already talked to D E C with regards to, we are reducing impervious area on this. They think that is a proper mitigation for that buffer, but again, it's, we're working through that process. We would hope the town sees this and part of what Mike is dealing with is pressure from the owner to keep this thing, we've delayed. Here we are, we, we were at, as I said to other people, we were at these discussions just about in January when the January first rules came about with the D E C.
Right.
And, and I, I, you know, it was during the football season, so I said, we were tush push away from getting through this. And now, here we are in June, almost July, and so there's significant pressures on his side. We would hope that, and I know it's, this is a Jamie call of conditional approval on D E C finalizing our permit, but that's what Mike needs to continue the process.
We've done that.
Okay, just wanted to throw that out there, cause we're getting work done.
Yeah, we, we've done that, you know, with some findings that, you know, it's coming along fine, it looks like it's gonna be good, whatever we, we, you know, that you can report to us has happened with D E C.
That, then.
But that you won't get your billing permit.
We understand that and part of this is the, the relationship between, uh, Mike's group and Mr. Morocco. And we're just trying to work through those issues.
Some of the other previous comments that I have in here were regarding variances, landscape buffer, building height.
So we had, we had gone through that process, we got the variances, I think, for the three items.
Okay.
Um, so we changed the wording on here instead of indicating needed, it's.
Okay.
Can you talk to us about the timeline with this National Grid easement as far as getting it moved so that you're not, we're not approving something showing the building like in a National Grid easement?
Hmm, I believe Mike, you need to have ownership of the property before you can actually make that move, right?
Right, and they, they have to have a work order, service order. And once we do request service, then the design, we actually have the design guy already teed up that he's gonna amend the easement.
I think the problem is also mitigated by if you are able to slide the building down and put that nosing parking, it, it could be shown right now outside the National Grid easement. If the building slides down, right, I mean, there's nothing being built in there, so.
Pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, pretty close. So you're right. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, you could make your amendments and do what you need to do in the background after that, but what we would look at is a buildable project today.
Jamie, if they are still showing part of like the corner of the building in the easement, can we approve that conditionally or do, does that need to be changed first before we can approve?
I mean, we can approve it, but it's, it's, you know, it's a risk, right?
Yeah, I mean,
there's, the problem is that it's, there's no process for charging it till we own it, so.
That's why I think it's much cleaner to be able to slide the building down and not show it in that easement right now so that.
I think in that email, he, he indicated on the call and he also indicated in the email, I believe that it's common practice to do this.
Yeah.
There's a service easement to a commercial property and you, you realign and move a building, it's, it's common practice for them.
Yeah, I would expect it to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, buildings and properties change all the time, you can't.
That's right, the transmission lines are another story, they wouldn't let you touch those. There's no.
I don't think you want to touch them.
No.
No, we don't let that happen.
Yeah, there's no, no moving those, but.
Well, I, I mean, I suppose again, similar to the D E C, if we can have enough evidence that we're not just sparking up a, you know, tree and nowhere to go, then I think we can make it conditional.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, again, I'm going away from conditional, I'm taking the conditions off of it and if.
Oh, if they move the building.
If they move it, put the nosing parking, like, you know, addressing those issues, leave the bottom part of the site the same, slide it down, put the nosing parking, you know, match the two of them together, then we don't have an issue.
Well, they. Sure.
We don't have anything to conditionally approve, we can just look at it as is and.
And then we just deal with that easement anyway, if we definitely have to, but it, but that, that doesn't affect your.
Right. Right, you deal with that. That doesn't affect us, it doesn't, I mean, you'll have to update a survey at some point to show the easement, right?
I understand.
And refile it, but.
Yep, understood.
Building wise, architecture hasn't changed, it's the same, same building, it's just where you're sliding it up and down the site, right?
Yep.
Everything else is remaining the same.
Did we do architectural review?
Yeah, we looked at it at one point.
Where we're, where we're.
Better do it now.
I mean, it's, it's the standard Taco Bell model. From what I remember, right? It's essentially a copy of the one on Thompson Row.
Yep. Yeah.
It's pretty close to.
Remind me, what, what's the dumpster enclosure, what are the materials, what's the?
We had a, a brick enclosure with a keystone cap on it.
Track skids.
Yep.
Is it similar, you know, similar materials and appearance to the building?
Yeah, I believe the brick color would match the same color as the bricks of the building and then the vinyl would match the rest of the.
No, not vinyl, tracks.
Tracks.
It was, one of these submissions, I think, had the building elevations on it, right?
Yeah, we had, we had a full package rendered. Somewhere in one of them.
So what we'll need, I mean, obviously, as you guys are, are working through sliding that building, putting the nose in back, feel free to circulate that through Eric and he'll, he'll get it to, or we can get your comments and collect feedback on those. Uh, we don't need to necessarily do another work session or, you know, let's help get taken care of.
Okay.
At this point, um, when you get to the point that you're, you're ready to do a full submission, it needs to be a full clean package.
Okay, I understand.
With everything in there.
Yeah, it's on.
Do we?
Yeah, we do. Can you scroll down Julie to page?
Yeah, but yes, of course.
Don't be so excited.
Yeah, oh, she's on it.
I did, don't be a little bit, I did, where do you want us?
Page, uh, page thirteen of that, site plan six twelve seven, three fourteen, page fourteen. Directional signage. So town code, directional signage are supposed to be two square feet, no more than three feet above grade. No project information including logos. Right, so you can have the enter exit, but you can't have a bell.
Okay. Maybe we'll look at that as.
That wasn't, we didn't address that with the Z B A or no?
No, I don't.
That's.
That's town, that's just.
That's part of second plan.
Well, the, so sometimes the challenge is that in this particular instance, if your back ways and you're like, you got the tire, dump tire there, you know, it gives you kind of advanced warning that the driveway is there if you have to make a safe move now. There, but I don't know if the ones there, that are there today had any logo on them, I think they did back when Carmelo's was there, but.
Yeah, but.
I mean, you have a monument sign, right?
What was there, what's now.
Yeah, and that's, that's on the far, far, and I was talking about traffic coming, heading northward. The building's kind of a little behind the trees and a little bit behind the dump tire. So it, it would help, but I mean, that does help identify the driveway, I mean, if you've never seen.
If all the.
Enter exit, never, same thing is, you know, I mean, think about Delta Sonic on Area Boulevard, it just has enter exit on it.
Yep.
You know, I think it's, your building is gonna be up close to the street, which was the whole point, you know, it's identifiable that it's there and you have an enter exit sign at all. There's no inherent benefit to having the bell on the enter exit in here and our town code doesn't allow it anyway.
Okay.
So the monument sign is this one now? That's the main monument sign?
Yes, that is the, I believe the smallest model they had in the, the book that we could.
Yeah, we put it, we put it on a brick base though, that won't be in a hole.
Okay. Yeah, it would be similar to Tom's.
Make sure that's okay, yeah, you know.
So we need to see that on the second. The detail.
And then same thing, I don't think you can have the logo on there, right? On the monument sign, right?
Directional is more strict.
We, if you're allowed.
Monument.
They're allowing logos on monuments. Natural logos, yeah.
Correct.
Shelby's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, so long as that one's twenty square feet, it should have the address.
Do you have the address on there? It's not in the address, it could just, it could.
On.
Just put an address.
On the monument sign, break or on the, wherever you want to put it.
Yeah.
The one, one, one item, this is.
Just the numbers, not.
Just the numbers.
Yeah, not the whole. This is the older, this is the older version of the face, the face is reversed in color now, so where you see the white around the Taco Bell, that's black and then the letters are white, so we'll update that too.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, just look at the design guidelines, make sure you read all those requirements.
Uh, the, the late night tag.
Oh.
So the. The drive-through.
Drive-through is what it probably is, will be typically preferred.
You still.
It can just say Taco Bell.
Yeah, that's all it can have. In the town code, it's all it's allowed to have, it's just the.
We did, and it's the same thing we had over U-Haul on Thompson. They only got it as U-Haul storage and all the other, like, they're not allowed to have all the, like, lists of what the business does, it's just U-Haul.
Do we, do we not have it on the sign, I thought we would add it right on the sign on Thompson. It says either drive-through or breakfast, one of the two. Only because that's, anything outside of that, you're, the appendage, you got three choices, otherwise we have to have a, we have to do a custom face.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know offhand what it says on Thompson, but if it does say something, it shouldn't say it. Is the bottom line, so. Um, yeah, the, the town code is pretty clear in terms of what is allowed and not allowed on the, on the monument signs. And then building, you had, that was, did you get variances on that one or you only have the one facing Bridge? You have Bridge and Enterprise, are the two allowed, right?
Yeah, allowed, yeah.
Yeah.
Only Bridge would be allowed by code.
What about Enterprise, the, the entrance road that's right there?
Wow, okay, is there? Yeah.
Bridge.
Bridge and Enterprise, yeah.
And the north. So, yeah, we can have the, the west and the north.
Um.
Allowed, and that's all that you would need. Do you have any on the south?
So it looks like you've, you've posted two signs on this?
There's one on this one, there's one on the tower coming through the.
Yeah, so that bottom left, that one's not allowed, you'd have to have a variance for that one.
You could have one on that other one where it's showing two.
And you've got a hundred square feet to work with for all of the signs you're proposing.
Do we not put, I think we went through it already with Z B A, didn't we, with our sign package? You should have.
They probably did the signs with the C P A.
Go back to the site, the updated site plan package here. Sheet C, I put four. Yeah, plan.
I'm sorry, John, which, which one?
I believe it's C four, should be four or five of the.
Yeah, you got it for the height, the front yard setback and the landscape buffer.
That would be this page here. Yep, okay.
I don't think we've really talked signage.
Right.
Or architectures.
So I think the one on the front of the building is one that we would be kind of critical, the one that if you're coming heading south, you need to see something. And then coming from the south heading north on the back of the building, you would need to see something now. One of the issues that we ran into at Thompson was that you have a totally nondescript building on the, uh, parallel of the road. And there, it, it doesn't, you need something there, at least when you're driving by to look over and see that, even if it's a letter set.
I think the, what you gotta understand is the one on the south side of the building, which is probably what you're, you're,
Yeah.
Nobody's saying you can't have it, it, it requires a variance to have.
Right, I was just gonna say that, it's for, let's separate the issue.
Right.
For planning board approval, would you like these elevations to not show any, be a performance?
It is, do you want to move it? Do you wanna move it through a little bit?
To be in formance, and then we can go to ZVA and talk about the add-ons.
Yes, and so what we've asked people to do in that instance is to block off, cause you know, to Eric's point, you get, you know, a sign on that facade. Alright, so to put a dashed, blocked signage band or signage area, you know.
Right, and then we.
As approved separately, you know, approved is a different.
Then we wrote ZVA.
Well, that would, that would come in as a a new site plan, basically, for signage. And then, and then go to ZVA and not back anymore.
Signage. Yeah. That can be done.
You would give me a separate.
So you should, I think that's that's process is.
If you want it, if you wanna separate it, if you wanna separate it out from the site plan, that is a different site plan.
Separate the sign package. But it's still a site plan application.
It's in a minute's time.
Can you come back, get a recommendation from the planning board, then go to the ZVA?
You do that. Yeah, if you.
As as a dirt guy, I like to do it that way, and and then I can arm wrestle with the sign package guys, both franchisee, the sign vendor, cause I'm not colored like guy, so, but I can talk about it once we, once we deal with the sign package, so. That's why we've kind of left it alone. He can almost even get building permits while we're arm wrestling signage, and then then, you know, whatever the ZVA determines.
A hundred percent.
If ZVA determines yes, no, or we we again balance these things out, that can come, um, you know, obviously, he's gotta order stuff and and meet that, those timeframes, but
Right.
Um, if that's okay with you, Mike, I think that's what we do for for a site plan approval, and then we we uh go back in for a sign package.
And there are, I mean, the, having that sign on the south side is, you know, done on the town and other locations. It requires variances, the only thing that we're saying.
And and this elevation, you can only have one sign.
A single sign on this elevation, and then a single sign on the northern elevation. Though this elevation, the north elevation are by right with a single sign, the south one, you just need to get a variance for.
Okay.
And keep it all under.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, yeah, for now, if we're gonna approve this without signs, take the signs off, like Nate was saying, you can show like a dashed line, like where the sign could go for those signs that are allowed by right, not the signs that would require variances.
Hmm.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, so don't show the one on the south until you come back there.
Yeah, and.
One of the.
These.
Um, yeah, and once you get kind of the site layout touched up, worked out, send a a quick one back to us and we'll we'll give you kind of quick feedback and.
Okay.
You know, help keep that process rolling.
Okay.
Are you requesting any window signs?
Not typically, no.
Okay, great. Architectural, take another.
You're giving me a little PTSD, asking questions like this.
I was starting to ask it all the time now, because.
Well, I think, I think when you, I think when you ask that, when you ask that question.
Well, because then it goes up and all of a sudden, all these window signs are all.
Yeah, the 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 vinyl film on the windows and all of that, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know any clients like that.
Avoid it, avoid it like the plague. Don't do it.
Yeah. Um, do you guys wanna talk, do you wanna talk architectural, since we haven't really gone through that? Yeah.
We certainly can, I mean, comments from the board on the architecture, I mean. I would have like.
It's a big work, it's.
It's me.
Think Mark looked at it at some point.
Mark look at the architect.
At the lighting, lighting.
Lighting.
We're all architects now.
Do you even know what a nubbin is? But this would actually have to be updated, because I don't think it reflects what's on the site plan, right? Cause the, or is that
Yeah, so.
Entrance on the north.
We would need to move this door to the side, and then I believe just this building mounted light would change as well. Speeding up changes.
The the north end, that entrance looks bigger on the site plan than it does on this drawing.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know what I'm saying?
What was that?
Go back to the site plan. See that, the the bump out on the north end right there?
Mm-hmm.
That seems much larger there than it does on the elevation.
Yes.
So, one of the two is not right, but.
We'll make sure everything is.
Okay, now then.
Coming safe then.
Did you run your lighting plan by state DOT?
We've supplied it to, um, Jeff Deep. He didn't have any issues with what we proposed.
Yeah, we've got phase two, right, with Jeff?
Yeah, I believe we've given him documents for phase two.
Are those awnings?
Not for our. These here?
Yeah.
I believe there's some metal awnings, just to cover the front door.
They're metal.
Yeah, I think it's the same as, those same type of awnings are over there, or in.
Do we have elevations for the other sides of the building? Did you wanna take a look at those, architects?
Jenny, Kathy, Randy, Doug, any architectural comments?
No, as long as it looks like Thompson Road, I'm fine with it.
No.
That's the the top one there is the east elevation, right? It's the internal to the site.
Yes.
Yep.
So that's south, the south elevation, provided I might not directionally challenge it. That tower is the one that I was talking about that would be important, the one on the right-hand side, right, lower corner, bottom left, yeah, you scroll up just a little.
Yeah.
That tower.
Right.
It's gonna be an important one.
Yeah, and that's the one you need a variance for.
Okay, okay.
Um.
That's on the dunn towers, dunn tire side.
Correct, yeah, that's the one that you need the variance for. The north, it's the one on the bottom right, is that the?
That's the south, south facing, right there.
Turned around here. In the bottom right image, which side is bridge?
To the left.
Where is bears to who, in relation to the bottom left? I'm turned around too. So this is the side post.
It's more of an old right. Oh, 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 we got the drive-through on the inside, I forgot.
Yeah, drive-through on the inside.
The drive-through on the inside.
That elevation at the top is the east elevation, so the bottom left is the south, the bottom right is the north.
Yeah. That's the inside, sorry, yeah, I forgot.
The bottom right is the north, and but the bottom right being the north, that is not what looks like what's on the site plan. You have an entrance or something like that.
Entrance.
So that elevation, like, just clean all this stuff up to match the site plan.
Yep.
That's in there. South elevation, the bottom left, that's the one that you need the variance for.
Yeah.
If we go, if we scroll up.
Yep, that's correct.
That sign on the upper right is not gonna be allowed, cause that faces internal to the parking lot. So that one's not allowed.
That's right.
We scroll up, up again. That one only has allowed one sign, that's the one that faces bridge. And then I think that's all your elevations.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Did you know the three variances you already have? Do you put them on the plan that they're associated with so we can see them while we're reviewing it, or do we have to go to separate documents typically?
It is listed in the zoning criteria checklist on the right side of the page, but we can visually represent it uh, on the actual layout line, if you like.
On the site. Do you see the red, the things outlined in red there, Jenny?
Yeah, yeah, I can see it now.
Any other comments on that? I think you guys have enough direction, right?
Yeah, very helpful, thank you.
So if you can give us at this point like a full new package with the elevations with everything, just so we're not kind of scrap them.
We're gonna, we're gonna put and give you binders, so you have. No, I mean, it's, that's what I've been doing later, to keep everything consolidated.
Yeah.
You can clean out your file and this will be our final package.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Julie loves to hear that.
We've done that.
Um, I guess I would only ask one other thing is, um, for the windows, are are you gonna show any, I mean, some of these um, have stuff in the windows, like, uh, somebody eating burrito or whatever, but there's none of that, right? Like, what's shown on these drawings or?
Yes, they said no window signs.
Yeah, no window. No window signage.
Yep, okay.
Don't give us ideas.
Believe me, we're not giving you ideas. Alright, we're telling you not to do that.
We'll take some pictures of guys eating burritos.
Did I just find myself a new part? Did I just find myself a new marketing job?
There you go.
Julie could be your spokesman.
I could, I could.
Taco Bell in the refrigerator right now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Alright, no other work sessions this morning, I think we can close up with work session meeting.